But it's probably not ideal. Again, it's three hours out of the day, but it's not the best, so.
And Phil's pretty, I'm gonna give him some props here, he's pretty handy. Those are just preliminary drawings.
Yeah.
The, the one on the right-hand side, it's got four classrooms on it.
Yeah.
There's probab- maybe, I'm just gonna throw this out here, Phil, maybe there is a possibility, if there's a three-classroom scenario where band is out there, but then there's two classrooms, you may be able to have a central corridor where it's actually breaking that. You see what I'm saying, it's not a wall dividing the band room from the classrooms, you actually got a full, uh, no different than what we have at Granby right now. The band room at Granby, and then there's a walkway, there's a hallway, and then there's classrooms across the band room there at Granby. And that makes a big difference, having multiple doors, big hallway type scenario.
They're gonna put you on the spot.
Right, roughly.
How big are those rooms?
About eight hundred square feet.
And the thing with the band room is, I think the band room at Granby is right around twelve hundred square feet, I think, thirteen hundred square feet. So, a band room would struggle operating in eight hundred square feet.
What are, what is it right now at Triway?
A trailer. Actually, the trailer though is-
It's fourteen hundred.
It's fourteen hundred, because they use both sides of it.
Yeah, thi- this is, like I said, super preliminary. It's just to make sure the building blocks are in there, and there's enough space.
And this one?
Um, again, yeah, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but probably around that twelve hundred. But yes, it could go, it could go on one side. We, we just did a, a classroom addition at Southwest City, way down there in the corner, that is a classroom, two classrooms on one side of a corridor, and a large classroom on the other side with an operable partition. It works great, it's really sound deadening, probably not enough for band. But, yeah, if you want to use it for band, open that thing up and you got the whole big room, or close it for two up, for three hours, or for the other five hours, or however many hours of the day.
Yeah.
And you've got two classrooms.
I just don't see, unless you guys, Rubik's Cube looks different. I just don't see a way that band doesn't go out there. I mean, and then sh- then, then it becomes, you know, obviously, we sound deaden it a- as much as possible, and then who, who's best served by being out there? You know, who can, who can handle the distraction the best, I guess, is basically what it comes down to. Your young, your youngers, I mean, it would be ideal to have them out there, but they're the, they're the most, ooh, squirrel.
They distract people.
Yeah.
Who has specials in the afternoon, and they're not even down there, and then afternoon, that's just.
Yeah, and that's, you know, we kinda, we kinda looked at that, um, I mean, like I said, band's gonna be sixth, seventh, and eighth hour. I mean, if you're, if you're looking at your current, you know, everything I would tell you would be a lie, I wouldn't know. Whoever has specials at the end. The other, the other thing to remember too, the ol- the older the kids in there, the less stuff you're probably gonna have in there. We went and looked at the fifth grade classrooms, they got some tables in there, and, you know, and, you know, some, some shelving, that's about it. You go into, you go into a first grade classroom, man, we got, we got everything. We got, we got everything, yeah.
Well, healthy dogs that don't want little kids next to the junior.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I get that.
Is that, um, three hundred thousand dollars, is that included in this price?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, I mean, at Triway too, we're probably gonna have to, you're probably looking at, their, their prices build buildings, you know, and we're gonna eat, we're gonna eat, not, obviously not all of it, but we're gonna eat up some of our, our recess space. Now, do we have plenty of room for recess over there? Absolutely. So, I mean, we're probably gonna have to look at, probably spend some money to relocate some things, and, you know, if we have to regrade some, you know, they're not, you know, a swing set's not a ninety-foot jump in the air, you know, we, we might have to look at that, so.
Gentlemen, you guys mentioned the change order piece, um, and that's all the unforeseen change orders. But obviously, if there's a change order that the district makes.
Like, if we wanted this to open up, like a clamshell.
Do we inherit those costs?
Yeah, so like, i- i-
I, I, I know the answer to that.
Yeah. Well, if the answer is not what you're thinking, we look bare minimum on everything.
Then you guys wanna add a whole nother shelter.
But my, my point is, in regards to the district as a whole, I mean, with a five million dollar, you guys do this all the time, with a five million dollar project, should we budget for a certain amount of over- overage that we could possibly, obviously, you guys eat the unforeseen.
Right.
But from your guys' experience, do districts sometimes in projects of this nature make much? This is, this is pretty simple. I mean, to me, there, there's not as many moving, with an addition of this nature, there's not as many, I think once we settle in, we're gonna pretty, pretty much set on what we're doing. But you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Should we budget for a certain amount of money?
That's just, in our experience, that's the beauty of do, of working through the design process with a contractor. Because we're the, we're the same ones that are gonna be building it. We have an interest in making sure that not only we hit our budgets, uh, but, but you don't have any questions to come back on either. So, if, if we, if we're building, and you say, hey, we'd love to incorporate a patio out here, that's, that's, uh, we're, we're glad to accommodate that, and, and, you know, reasonably pass along a contractor cost on that kind of a change order. If, uh, you know, it, there's not, there's gonna be plenty of times of meeting and going through, uh, however you guys choose to set up building committee or review times that we have with you.
Good.
Plenty of opportunities to discuss through everything that's the dis- that would be possible district responsibility, where, like, in this, in this project, we're including everything. But if you want to go direct to your IT guys, and, and hire out the, the access controls that, to the same company that does your access controls, just kind of as a, as a, as kind of a maintenance thing, hey, we need you to come up, come and install a couple more doors. We'll work with those guys, and you can, you can go to them direct. But that's all included in this price. So, there, there may be a list of things that are, uh, cost-effective for you guys to just do, uh, take those direct, if you like working with those contractors. We can also work with them, so we see that going both ways. But we try and capture all of those in this initial budget, uh, to make sure there's nothing-
The controlled access doors are a great point. Uh, the bells, and the, you know, obviously, you gotta have all that.
Intercoms.
Uh, intercom, yeah, so this is a complete turnkey. So, so it will not be a situation where we leave something out, or if we do, it's on us.
Or it's something that we discussed, and you guys wanted to take that out of our contract and, and out of our price.
And, and that would be completely, that would be really clear, and there would be no surprises.
The, the only thing I would say on this is, this is a, if with a classroom building, we're not including furniture.
Right, and yeah, yeah.
And that brings, so that brings me to the next point, obviously, I understand furniture and everything. And this is a storm shelter, are there no goes? Like, this, you cannot put this in here, like, I, we wanna put, we wanna make giant cabinets that's going to store everything in the world, you know? Are those things that, are you gonna tell us, you can't do that?
If you asked, if you asked us to build a lot of permanent things in that space to the point that it couldn't technically fit five hundred and eleven people times five square feet per person into that space, we're gonna tell you, hey, you're not gonna fit as many people in this space now.
Yeah, I'm, okay, and I, I under- and I'm glad you said that. We're designing that structure for five hundred and eleven people. But, but it's, um, it's grandparents' day.
I think that's probably the best example.
Yeah.
And we're gonna add, and, and my world falls apart, and I gotta shove two hundred more people in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna do it.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're gonna shove as many people as you could possibly fit.
There's no, there, there's no one saying that in a tornado event, you can't do that.
All, all, all you're saying is, you have designed a building by spec for five hundred and eleven people with five square feet.
Per the ICC five hundred.
And that's, that's why, in order to, to comply with that code and say, we've got a storm shelter that fits our entire stated population, that's what we're basing that size off of. And five square feet per person is what they require, and then you, with, for, once you-
It's a lot of space.
Now, once you have two hundred square feet, or two hundred people, you gotta include a handicap space for the first two hundred, and that space is ten square feet, and then you'll go on and add another one. So, this has like three square, three handicap spaces at ten per, and then the rest of them at five.
Scott, at what rate are we growing? Here's how we're growing.
Talking about Stella, or just?
The, the, our children, our, our population at Triway.
Yeah, I mean, as of right now, Claire got three more today. As of right now, we are about the same right now as we were last year at Triway, right now. Um, but that's also, but-
At the end of the year.
But, yeah, but, uh, I would also say, you know, you can say we're static compared to last year, but compared to the year before that, we're up almost, you know, seventy-five kids. So, I mean, um, I mean, and, and, and they asked me that, because, I mean, we can, we can, we can, we can build this on a, on a different number, you know? He, they just asked me, it's like, how many are you gonna accommodate, and that's the number I gave them. I mean, we could say the number six hundred. And, and if we make, especially here at Triway, if that number becomes six hundred, this structure becomes bigger, just because of the classroom space. It's, unless I'm wrong, unless I'm wrong.
Or, um, if you want to keep it to the budget that we're presenting, you look at that furniture as it's your, it's your choice. If you wanna say, plan that you're gonna spend some time and move furniture and stack furniture, the, you're gonna fit, with that building, you're gonna fit closer to six hundred and fifty people in there if you didn't have furniture, or if people sat on and under furniture. So, yeah, you can, you can go with this kind of general rule of deducting thirty-five percent of the space, or you can go with the rule of deducting your actual furniture. So, once we lay furniture in there, you can, till we can itemize that, take that space out, you, your, your actual, uh, number could actually increase, once we actually lay furniture in there. But then, even from there, it's your prerogative to move that stuff and say, hey, we can fit six hundred.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I, I know where you're, I think I know where you're going is, you know, are, are we building a space that we're gonna outgrow?
In five, ten years.
In, in five years or so. And I can answer the question.
There is a benefit of having the band room out there as well, because it is a larger classroom, it's a larger space, it typically has chairs that could stack or be moved, or whatever the case may be. The, they're more cost effective to build when there's not as many walls and rope up. Obviously, we need classroom space on Triway as well.
I'll tell you this, Rebecca, and, and just go along with your, your thought, you know? If that is an ever-increasing population, and it does, you know, and we find out in five or six years, we're, we're, you know, we're bulging again. It's taken us about, how long, how long did, for no tax, for, to get us to five and a half?
Seven.
Took us about seven years. So, I mean, worst, worst-case scenario, if we have to look at this in another seven years of putting another structure somewhere, we would be close to where we're at now. Now, obviously, nothing, you know, nothing in the world ever got cheaper in seven years. But, you know, that's, that's something we could look at, a- as far as, maybe, i- if we needed to do something like, if we need to.
Does the building at Triway, does the actual campus at Triway have space for more, for, for very much more?
Only what you're gonna put.
So, so if you do grow an enrollment, if you do grow an enrollment, you're gonna need more space i- in the future anyway, and that space can be built as classrooms. So, we could even take that in mind here, and looking at the, if you click full, uh, yeah, right there. You know, we could lay this out such that you could continue to go off to the south.
I mean, yeah, this, this goes the way of the dodo. And, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with you, Seth, Seth and I kinda talked about this.
Yeah, what is that one right there?
That's the trailer, that trailer.
Okay, so that's what I thought.
And maybe that, and maybe that trailer stays, that everything that's in this shed.
Oh, that's the old crowd.
That's, yeah, that's the barracks.
I'm thinking that.
Yeah, which still has a bunch of stuff in it, but.
Very little stuff that goes in there comes back out of there.
Yeah.
Because of the, the mildew and the, it's just-
Yeah, they're right here.
So, if we move the band, then what, what would we do with that trailer?
Well, that's what I was saying, we can get, I mean, obviously, you can get rid of it, or this thing is just full of, you know, nice and old and everything else. So, I mean, anything that would have to be kept, maybe we keep the trailer, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the structure itself, and it's now closer for storage of whatever. It's just, it's just a thought.
That's the space I originally thought for the thing, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's, we, we had looked at that, that's, it's-
Cause it'd be closer to the younger kids.
Yeah.
Essentially located.
It's just harder to get a, an entrance to everything from there. The gym's here, and then you have the entrance, the nurse's office, and the fourth grade's right there. And then you start, if you start coming over here, you're gonna get in, you start getting into the, the parking lot.
Phil, didn't you say the grades in there were all, it was crazy in there?
Yeah, I'd originally, just looking at the map, put a, thrown one on there to, to go outside, on the site and look at. When we did a couple of times, it's a lot more complicated than it looks from there. The slope, uh, is pretty substantial there. And then, the, the tie-in to the building, where you would actually connect to the building would be quite a mess. Right up in that corner where the gym meets the, um, I don't know what we call that building right there.
The one you were talking about earlier?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, uh, right up in that corner, you have a lot of electrical and, uh,
It's kinda-
A lot of stuff that can't be covered.
Do you guys build two-story shelters? I've seen them at other schools.
Two-story shelters, so there's, there's different ways you can do that. You can go, uh, you can do, like, a lot of the times, a multipurpose building will have a mezzanine in there. The, if you're gonna rate that, if you're gonna call that occupiable space, a lot of them, that's storage space, not occupiable space. But, but yeah, you could, you could get more, more square footage out of that.
What's that one, just cause that one at school that had like, it was four stories, and all these schools are just-
If we, if we were talking about a bigger-
Where are the stairs? I have nightmares about getting lost in stairs in school. And here, they're just like, voila.
So, what's next? I mean, I think we can all agree that we need this, or we wouldn't have to come on here. How it looks, where it's put, all that other stuff, that's a complete total other conversation, right? So, what do we gotta do? Put it on the meeting for Thursday to talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, probably ideally next week, or we, say we wanna talk about it, and we want to proceed forward, like, we're going to, to ask for, you know, a no-tax increased bond issue, and, you know, we can, we can go into whatever language you want, you know? It's a no-tax increased bond issue, well, and then, or we can say, we're not increasing your taxes, but they were gonna get paid off in, you know, fifteen years, and now they're not. So, I mean, we can, you know, however you wanna rephrase it and everything. There are some people that will not, they're just not gonna vote for it.
As far as phrasing it goes, that's back to you guys, right, on marketing? Yeah, a- a- as far as marketing? Yeah.
Well, there's also your bond language too.
Yeah.
Your bond language, you work with your financial, which is probably LJ, isn't it?
That's who we work with.
Yeah.
They'll help you with the bond language and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, we will help you market it.
So, let's just say Thursday, we take it to vote, we vote that we wanna proceed. What, a- as far as just the bond issue? And, and I can, I can get you some more information on this, but then, in order for us to be selected, we have to be procured through an RFQ process, in, in which, in which basically, you guys would advertise in a request for qualifications for an organization such as ours to respond. And then, you guys, we would definitely respond, you might receive, uh, uh, get a couple others, or you might, uh, we might be the only one you get, and then you guys would make your selection based off of the responses you have. At that point, if we were selected, we would immediately start engaging and setting up meetings and beginning the strategy of, of marketing this and, and going about. And then also, um, further those discussions on the design phase, how you guys wanna proceed that way, um, as far as that goes, with the design phase agreement.
So, Chuck, and I mean, I'm, I'm gonna have to do homework, cause I, I just don't know. But I'm, I'm going to assume next week, we would go with that, and if we wanted to, then we could, you know, we could say, we're, we're gonna go forward with plans for obtaining RFQs from everybody, and then we could start that process, and, and I, I don't know what that process is, I'll have to, I'll have to read up on that. But I, I would think, if we can start to do that, then by our October board meeting possibly, then we might be able to have those requests for qualifications maybe done by then? I don't know, I, I, it sounds good in my head.
So, all that gets done by October, we get with you guys, marketing, when's all that stuff pushed out?
That, that'll, usually you form a committee, and I don't know if you guys did that last time, to where you have a committee that helps you pass the bond issue. But we will do banners, signs, whatever the committee wants. Uh, I'll work with Scott and, and tell him what we've done. And in some districts, uh, I don't want time, McDonald County went all out and advertised and everything, but they passed the last bond issue, and they didn't even advertise it, it was almost like that. So, what, you know, I don't, I don't know what approach you wanna take, but, but we're here to help.
I, I guess, I, I guess, and, and maybe that's, that's a question for you all. Have you, have you said boo about this to anybody? I mean, have-
Just kinda doing them out.
And, what's the feeling?
Well, if they have a kid at Triway, they're all for it.
Sure.
And for the old farmer that's retired, they're not for it, but I'm working on it.
And I understand that, you know? I think, and I hate to say this, you know, ha- having to have kept kids after school for up to two hours a couple of different times last year, you know, and, you know, may, maybe what, what we need to do is have you guys go down, and we'll do a tornado drill each, Granby and Triway, and just kinda like, okay, this is, this is what it's like.
That would be a great idea.
The old farmers want their property value to increase.
I get it.
So, we need to continue to increase our schools.
Well.
And I, I will say, for, for us to do the banners and everything, we have to report it to the Ethics Commission. So, you will have to have some type of committee, now whether you use them to promote anything, but your signs are gonna have to have the name on the bottom of it. But we have to repu- report this as a donation, we're giving it to you.
Right.
But we have to report it to the Ethics Commission that we donated X amount of dollars for your sponsorship.
Did somebody say earlier about videos? See, the last time we had one, we had a little square box on a map, and the people didn't, like, what is that? They, they wanna see, what are we getting for our money? So, we have gotta be very open and explain everything to them at each site as best we can.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and, and we will, um, by the time we're ready to market this, there will be, uh, uh, we will have several meetings, get things honed in. Even if we don't even go with the design phase agreement until after it passes, we will get it to the point to where it is, this is exactly what you're getting within that budget.
Sheila, are you more talking about renderings, or are you more talking about something that looks more like this?
Just something, we're, you know, we've got three classrooms, or we want, people don't, but this, 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 and here, there's safe rooms, that, just so they know.
I, I, yeah, I, I just wanna make sure that I, I, I know which way we need to, cause I, I, you know, I remember that shit.
And hopefully, I would think that there would be less drama, questions, all that other stuff with it being, is that safe for safety?
Not that, yeah.
Do you not think so?
I'm just living my dream.
So, the, on the timeline, uh, question, we typically wouldn't see marketing materials going out uh, until late February, March, kinda hit that.
Right, right, but we have time to form that committee, to figure things out, you guys have the renderings, so we can have everything in place. Yes, yes, absolutely. Kinda give us a timeline so we can keep up with this.
We'll have everything for you, that's, that's not a worry.
Yeah, 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 we would have e- each stage, um, laid out, as far as when your, when your bond language is due, when the committee, that it has to be registered, all that, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's different ideas on the yard signs and stuff. Some schools put out a couple early, and then as it gets a little closer, they put out a few more, and it's just like it's exploding, and then all of a sudden, wait before the bond issue, they're everywhere.
And I'll, I'll be honest with you too, that was, that was a question that was asked, if, if anybody does start, is like, this is designed, the theme of shelter is designed, if a tornado warning goes off, they open, community can come in. This is not what this is designed for, and they did, I think, specifically ask me about that. And we could, but now, it's, it's getting bigger.
Kids.
Yeah, it's getting bigger. So, I mean, and at two AM at Stella, the, the expectation is, those doors are gonna get opened. Now, if the National Weather Service doesn't issue a tornado warning in Neosho, and this happened here a bunch, doors don't open. But if Sheila's there and like, there's a fog cloud, right there, I'm going to Triway, and the doors are locked, well, that's, the popularity contest has not been won. So, when that happens, I say, this is designed for our students. Now, if, I'll tell you, if Rebecca's down there with picking up her kids, it's like, whoa, whoa, I'm sorry, you know? Your kid can come, your, your car's over there. We're gonna get everybody we can in there. But, I mean, the expectation is not gonna be that these things are gonna open up.
But there is one in Stella already.
There is.
And there's, is there one ready?
No, maybe, is the community building?
No.
Well, my wife got in it when, when the tornado went down over there, so.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's where the students are there?
Yeah. Because I know that, you know, everybody's used to just coming, you know, you see, you hear a storm shelter, and you, you just come out here, and then people go to it.
Well, that makes sense to not have it open for the public in, in Stella, because there's already one there, and there's a classroom.
Where, where is the one in Stella?
Like, right there.
Right street Stella.
I mean, where though?
Or the hospital.
Oh, there's one street in Stella. Two, it's right there.
But, but granted, why couldn't, why couldn't that one be open to the community if we're not-
It may, I don't know, I, I, I-
There's not enough space for people. You wanna get your kids in.
But, yeah.
Right, I'm thinking more, I'm thinking more along the lines of not during school hours.
Who's, yeah, who's gonna open it, and, right, and I mean, I, I don't wanna-
That one doesn't sell.
Yeah, I don't wanna play that. Anyway, that's why it's designed for our school community during school hours. What else, guys?
I think we can talk all the options to death.
No, no, I know, but I mean-
As far as timeline, I do think it needs to go out to the public sooner than later.
Yeah.
Cause everybody, last time, feel like, we have thirty groups, just excited about this.
I'd like to, can we set up like tables or booths at event, at games and different things for the ones that do, the farmers that do?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I still think it's probably gonna be best for us to have like a, a community thing at, at each campus. And then we could, we could always have stuff out, probably the high school, just because, you know, that, you know, central, central location, everything, and, and try to show stuff like this, and-
Even some, just a little.
Yeah, yeah.
How big is your, how big is your band?
At, at Triway?
Yeah, that you may be needing room for.
Um, actually, that's, that's our problem right now, is cause it's, they, it's big, there's probably about forty now.
So, I mean, I think that would be a perfect group to have, don't push this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I know when we, uh, had the one at Mountain Burnin', you know, it's Voag, and the Voag parents, the first time it- the first time it failed by a handful of votes, and then they added a BOAG renovation, and I mean, the BOAG parents came out and supported it a hundred percent, so. I, I'm just thinking of groups for you, like your band.
You do find a lot of, um, energetic band parents.
You know any? Any, any questions about any, I mean, I, I agree, we can, we can talk to death, but I mean, based on anything they, they've shown you, you know, any questions about any of that? ICF, any questions about that?
Slightly off-topic, kind of, but not a lot. When we very first started talking about this, we talked about putting a building here at the high school, so everybody got one.
Yeah.
In order to get hopefully more votes.
We can't do a tax increase.
We, it probably is not off the table, but we're gonna have to ask for money, and it's gonna have to be a tax increase. And, you know, about every, uh, every dime gets you about a million bucks. So, I mean, prob- probably for something to be built out there, and I, I am, they don't, they, they have heard nothing of this. So, I mean, we might be talking about, you know, three million dollars.
It wouldn't have to be.
No, it's not the top hall.
No, I mean, it wouldn't have to be, it wouldn't have to be a small shop.
Oh, no, no, you're absolutely right, yeah, I mean, you're just talking about, you know, your, your biggest cost is probably just attaching the buildings.
And we still have extra money, right, that we can spend on some of that stuff? Like, we don't have to bond out to build that stuff, right? Or, yes.
Maybe not, serious though. We're gonna network.
We're probably not gonna be able to afford all of it, 'cause.
Why? Just kidding. All my kids say, well, why?
I did do my last ESSR drawdown, which was worth nine hundred and forty-two thousand, which is all gonna go into Fund One. So, I mean, we have nine hundred and forty-two extra thousand dollars that we would have coming to us. But, you know, to Rebecca's point, we're, we're gonna build a structure, and even, even if that structure was only two million dollars, we're still gonna have to ask for more money to get to that point. That's it.
Well, just my two on that whole deal is, let's try to get something passed with a no-tax increase, because we really need these.
I agree.
Scott, I know you know this, but you'll also be able to sell your bonds and then invest those, too, and you pay for the project as well, so you'll earn some more money, probably wanna talk to John Youngman or some group like that.
Rebecca, the other thing, and, and you say that because Seth and I talked about it the other day too, I mean, they are, at the high school, they are bursting at the seams, especially for band and, and choir. And, and, and building a structure that could accommodate them, you know, w- we were kinda thinking, you know, on the other side of the art room-ish area. And, I mean, that, that would, that would be the ideal, ideal spot, could we, I just have this fear of asking for money, and then it's just, and asking for a dime or twenty cents for a couple million bucks, and then your taxes are going up. I mean, they just are, and, and I, and, and everybody here is on the same page, like, I'd vote for it, like, now, now, we've got seven votes, that's, that's good. So, you know, that, that's, that's my only fear, it, it really is, and I, I would love to be able to do that, I really would, 'cause I, I do think it needs to be done, it really does.
Is that something that they could look at?
I mean, for example, they, they can, yeah. I mean.
It changes the bond language.
Oh, it would, yeah, it's gonna change everything, but I mean.
It wouldn't need to be ICF, though.
No, it, it doesn't need, I mean, if you're talking about a, you know, a stick structure, that's gonna, that would be on the east side over there of the, of the high school, that would need to be, how big?
Forty by eighty, probably.
That would need to be forty by eighty.
I mean, you have four months, almost four months before you need to have that bond language confirmed, so, there's definitely time that.
So, I mean, if you, if you could just look at what, what a forty by eighty structure would be, and it, it would, it would be attached to the high school, I mean, I guess it doesn't need to be attached, but I mean, ideally, it would be nice.
What's the, there's the long lane that heads back toward the FEMA building, where.
You're talking more toward the north.
On the north, on the north lawn.
Yes.
I have a high school map, Phil, if that's easier. My, my only thought on it is, if we were gonna do a tax increase, we're hoping to save these. Both campuses in, and the expansion of. Probably gets us the best shot before setting right here, but.
Well, I think, I don't know, it's one of those things where I, I, I could be wrong. But I think a lot of people like no tax, okay, I'm making it now, it was fine, you add a little bit, and the whole thing's in jeopardy now.
Then we're talking five to ten years before we do.
Yeah.
Anything.
You would be.
For a no-tax increase.
For a no-tax increase.
I'm just, I don't know.
Now, I mean, de- depending on what they come back with on, on a cost, it's just money. You know, we, we could, we could start looking at socking money away, and I mean, with, with the, with the strict intent, intent purpose, that, that's what it's gonna go toward. You know, however, however many, couple hundred thousand dollars that, that we can do, I, I will tell you right now, which we'll never see it again. Right now, our, our reserves are about forty-four percent. It's too high, but.
Hey, maybe Lazy Boy will give us some money to build up performing arts.
Absolutely, I'll go ahead and ask him for it.
Well, apparently, Grandma said they would give us money if they went at the right time. And I said, right, what, what they told some of the baseball fans, 'cause we've already given up for this year, and that.
Anyway.
Haven't seen it, though.
But, I mean, that, we, I mean, it, it's certainly not gonna get done next year, but I mean, we could, we could start that process. O- o- obviously, a stick, a stick structure's gonna be cheaper than, I think, it's gonna be cheaper than that. And, and going that way with it. And I would also say, you know, however we wanna, um, going back to these two, however you wanna prettify them on the outside, I know, like, Triway on that end right now, it's stucco, and we could, we could do that, or you can brick it, or, or whatever, so I mean, it doesn't have to be like,
What is that quote with, you said on Gramby, it's the?
I just figured, I just figured brick on them, and then you could, you can start backing off some cost if you go to the metal panels with the Macy Wayans code, or, or you back it off even farther than that.
Kinda like that one example you had.
The, the.
The red one.
The initial conversation about stucco is probably, just because that's what we're attaching to, it doesn't give you that feeling of that's what a storm shelter, that.
It doesn't make you feel safe.
Yeah, but it's just that cladding, there's no structural value in the brick. It's the concrete wall that's there, but it does feel a little more substantial.
There is gonna be a little bit of separation, 'cause that alleyway at Triway, that's not part of the storm shelter, correct?
No, it can, it can look like part of it, or it can just be glass, you know, it's not very wide, so.
Walkway that'll take you from the parking lot into the Triway playground, that is not part of the storm shelter.
But we can, we'll look to see what the cost is, just to see, you know, what, what that would entail.
I think the lack of change orders is like amazing too, anytime, anything like that, I feel like that's where a lot of.
I wrote it down, too.
People make, make their money, and it's like, yeah.
What was it, a no-change order?
Yeah, not having that is admirable for your company too, because that just speaks for the detail.
Judy will, will know this story, I think I've told it to Scott. Our superintendent had built Rocky Comfort, the new Rocky Comfort, and the architect left out the septic field and some ventilation. Now, come out of what you hear, Rocky Comfort kids like to pee inside. But I, I passed the bond issue for that, and had to find money to put that in, and the architect, it was his miss, I mean, I didn't think about it, a superintendent. So, that's why I started going with CTS at the time, and Bergey. I just thought that was wrong.
Because I asked for a change order a couple of times, and I was told no. Now, those get pricey, I'm on another board, and one just came through too, 'cause the, one of their contractors can no longer do business in the United States, so they're asking for an additional sixty thousand dollars to get a contractor that's within the United States.
Company doesn't start with a B, did it?
Yeah, just, no, that's, I think that's a great, that's admirable.
Guys, is there anything else we have, more, any other questions? John, thank you very much.